Hello, hello, everybody. Welcome to Black to Black Talk Show. I have with me tonight, uh, candidate Latasha Briscoe. She's running for school board place one, I mean, place two. And, uh, I will let her now introduce herself and then we'll go into questions.
Hello, how is everyone tonight? Uh, my name is Latasha Briscoe. I am the director of All Face Day School. I have lived in Silsby all my life. I graduated from Silsby High School in 2003. Um, I have three beautiful daughters. Uh, one is in high school and I have two that's in middle school. And I'm running for school board place number two.
Yes, uh, so, uh, we're gonna go into the questions. I'm gonna, uh, um, right now I'm editing the audience, so it'd be public, so just make sure it's public there. Okay. So, let, I'mma start off by asking you just a few questions, just to break the ice. So what made you decide to run for school board?
So, um, honestly, last year, I was thinking about running for school board. And, uh, I don't know, I just waited till the last minute and really didn't do it. But this year, um, I just went and did it. And I went, it went back to my why. Because I have a love for children. And what made me, um, become, well, first I started in the classroom. No, I started as a music teacher at, um, All Face. And then I became, uh, um, a teacher and then back to music class and then to the director. But what made me start, wanna start that journey as an educator in the first place was because I was at home with my children. Um, I was a stay-at-home mom while going to school for nursing. And children that would come to my house, I realized that they weren't getting what my children was getting. And that they were lacking somewhere. And I said, you know what, I know that I can't save all of them. But Lord, if I can save as many as come across me, that that's what I was willing to do. So when me and my, me and my baby girl, we was walking down the sidewalk, we was just dancing. And Ms. Tracy, I love her to this day, she said, I think that you, you would be a great music teacher. And from that day forward, I just have enjoyed every minute of it. I mean, I even, well, honestly, since I was a little girl, keeping kids. And I, I was mad at my mom them some days, but I said, the good Lord knew my apology. So here I am.
Okay. What do you see as some of the primary challenges, uh, facing Silsby ISD? And how do you plan to address them?
Some of the challenges I see is accountability. Um, I, I, I think that first we have to start off with ourselves, uh, as a board, being accountable for some, some of the things that go on, some of the challenges that we face. And we have to hold the parents accountable, even though I know we, and myself included, we don't wanna hear that. But we have to be held accountable and some of us may say, well, we single parents, we can't, oh, we're not a voice for our children, who gonna be?
Yes.
And it's time for us as parents to step up. Our kids having behavior issues in the classroom, that's another problem. We have to step up. We can't always look at the teacher.
Yeah.
We have to look at our kid. We have to get to the root of the problem. We can't be those parents saying, oh, my kid would never, oh, our kids. And I'll think about ourselves when we was coming up. I parent probably still say to this day, oh, no, not my child. And we sitting up here not saying nothing and saying, who, who, Mom, if you really know, you probably be ready to tell the bone off of me right now.
Yeah.
Baby, some things you just still to this day, as old as we are, we will not disclose with our parents.
Yeah. But you don't, you don't ever, you can't never say what your kid won't do. You pray that they won't do certain things, but you can't, you can't guarantee that they won't try to do.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. Uh, so, uh, what do you define student success? What measures to advocate that, that you can ensure the student achieve it?
Um, for students to be confident in whatever it is that they're doing, no matter what disability that they have or whatever, but being confident in everything that they do. And being able to, you know, praise them in their small wins. Because so many times, you know, we wanna praise for the big things. But we need to start praising for the small things until they get to the bigger things. And that will make them confident enough to want to do more and do better.
Yeah, I agree. Cause we gotta start somewhere, right?
We have to start somewhere. If we looking for the big, every time one of the students do something, guess what, we failing our students.
Yes.
We failing them. If we need to be able to put, if these kids are having behavior problems, as much as we are sending sad notes home or behavior notes home, we need to be making sure that we sending positive notes home on the little things that they're doing as well.
Yeah, encouragement.
Yes, we have to encourage them some kind of way because you don't wanna always just beat them down. Cause we're not getting nowhere by doing that.
Yeah. And then everybody won't make it in sports, so you can't depend on that either.
That's right. That's right. Sports is not for everybody. And we know that college is not for everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
Let's find out what is for them and encourage them to be the best that they can be in whatever it is that they looking, looking, striving to, striving to.
Okay, uh, so what are some of the top three things that you gonna, uh, if you, you win your seat, three priorities you gonna, uh, for the district if you're elected?
That goes right back to accountability. And again, that starts with us, our teachers, the parents, to everybody as a whole, ain't nobody left out. All of us have to be held accountable, our behavior. We, in, in the school, our behavior is, it's really hurting our classroom. And it's affecting all of our students, not just the ones that's, that's acting out, but all of them. And the environment. What about, how is our environment whenever our students are walking in, in the building, into the classrooms, walking out of them? How is the environment?
Yes, okay. So, so that's like, so if they, they, they go in school and people come in and they all frowning their face, or they, they looking sad, or they, every time they walk in, they reprimanding their child. And it's all with their same child, that also beats them down.
And it does.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, also beats them down.
Yeah, I mean, is, or you, whenever the kids coming in, are they being greeted every time they coming in? Or are they say, have a good day? You know, what, what is it that we are doing to, to try to, you know, make the child feel loved in our classrooms or in our building? Because someday, you know, we gonna have off days, we're humans, all of us have off days. But whenever our student is having that off day, are we able to see that?
Yes.
Are we able to see it? And encourage them and pull them to the side and say, hey, I see that you having an off day. Or are we just like beating them down because they're having an off day?
Trying to find out what the problem is.
Yes. So, I mean, we, we, we have to kinda know our students. Try, try our best to learn our students. And we know that everybody is not gonna bond. We understand it. But even when you're not bonding, how are you still encouraging that student?
Yes.
How, I mean, I mean, the, the, the students, they can encourage the teachers as well. Students can see that, you know, the, the teachers are having an off day. How are they doing that? Again, that brings back accountability to everybody.
Yeah. So how do you feel about the current curriculum standards at Silsby ISD? Are there areas you believe need improvement or change?
Yes, I do. Um, especially with the standardized test. I feel as though that we focus so much on the standardized test and it's, it's affecting us bad. Uh, and I feel like that when COVID hit, because we were, we were focused so much on a standardized test that our children missed a lot. And I feel as though that because our children missed a lot, that caused a lot of problems in our classrooms as well because we had to keep on going in spite of, you know, what we see because of what we're handed to, to teach these children. But why us as, as teachers and educators, we see where the problems at, but they don't wanna listen.
Yeah.
And we as, we, I mean, we have to have some kind of advocate for the teachers.
Yeah.
You know, to be able to have their back and say, hey, this is what the teachers are seeing that's going on in the classrooms. How can we help them? How can we better assist them?
Okay. So how, uh, how do you propose addressing diverse learning needs of students including the special education and gifted programs?
And when I, that question right there, we was, the special needs and the gifted talents, but what about the children in the middle? What about the children in the middle? And we have children in classrooms with teachers who are not equipped.
Yeah.
And that's a problem. That's a problem. So is there some kind of way that we can equip all teachers? Even though I know some of us don't wanna go to these different trainings and stuff, but how can we equip all the teachers to be able to assist these students since we're gonna put them in their classroom?
Yeah.
We have, I mean, we have to find the median somewhere.
Yeah. So, uh, given budget constraints, how would you prioritize funding to ensure essential programs or service are maintained?
I would say by communicating. Everybody who deal with that budget gotta communicate, or with different budgets, gotta communicate. I mean, and we gotta communicate without, without assumptions. We can't say, well, I thought they was gonna do this, or, or this over here was gonna, we gotta communicate as a whole and not just certain people.
Okay. So what is your approach to transparency and accountability in the district financial matters? What's, what's gonna be your approach?
And I, which, but, uh, I think that was the communicating without assumption.
Yeah, okay. Transparency, okay, okay. So, uh,
Communicating with transparency and making sure that there's clarification.
Clarification, okay. So how do you plan to envir, involve the parents, teachers, and community members in decision-making processes? So like when y'all have a board, a school board meetings, so what is your take on that?
By getting, getting the information out there and letting them know what's going on. And, and letting them know how important it is for them to be there.
Yeah. Cause a lot of times, there's no parents there.
Yeah, and we have, we have, yes, we have to get the community, um, get it out there to the community.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, uh, what do you feel about the, the, the school vouchers they for the, so, try to, try to get there?
I totally disagree with it. Because this is, if, I, I don't understand, if we paying tax dollars for the public schools, I, we so worried about, about private schools because of why? It's clear that they can afford that.
Yeah.
That's clear. So why, why are we worried about that? And for us to worry about some students and not all students?
Yes.
I have a major problem with that.
Yeah.
I have a, a huge problem with that because we supposed to be for all students.
Yeah.
Not some. So, yeah, I got, that is, that, there is a definitely no, no for me.
A no for you, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, how would you, uh, handle a situation where your personal belief conflict with the needs and desires of the community?
Well, if I'm, if I'm placed on the board, I have to think of what's best for the community. I can't, I cannot worry about what's best for me and what I want. It, this is about the community as a whole, not an individual. And sometimes, I mean, when you get in, in situations like this, or you wanna, you wanna advocate for people, you ha, you can't just advocate for some, you have to advocate for everybody.
Yes.
And I'm here to advocate for everybody.
Yeah, so all, all include, all teachers included, all kids included, everybody.
Uh, when I say everybody, I mean, everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
I mean, that's just how it has to be.
Yeah. So how do you think they treat the teachers at the Silsby ISD? And how do you think they can improve in that area?
Well, I think that, I think that there is, is some, some may feel as though that they are treated, you know, fair, some not so much. And I feel like if the board would hear from the teachers on how they feel, maybe put a survey out there and get the survey back and read the survey on what the teachers are saying.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Maybe that can help the board better assist the teachers. Uh, you know, communication can be open like that. That can open up a whole lot of doors between the, the school, I mean, the school board and the teachers.
Okay.
And that way you'll be able to, you know, bridge that gap.
Yes, that sounds.
Because at the end of the day, we, the school board should want the teachers to know that they are behind them a hundred percent.
Yes. Should, yes, I agree. So we need more, that's why accountability and all that come in here.
Yes.
Yeah, so that survey, survey will give them a, a look into what the teachers are feeling and what they can see improvements on and what they see that can make things better. And if they, if they, school board would just listen to them, the superintendent would listen to them, it would make school run much more smoother.
Yes, because at the end of the day, the school, the, the teachers is what make the district look good. I mean, and you want, you want your teachers to feel as though you support them and not feel, but also know it.
Yes, yeah.
So if you not, if you not behind your teachers and doing some things that they would like to be done in the district, what are we doing?
Yeah. I agree. So, uh, how do you feel like, how you envision working with your, collaborating with the other board members and the superintendent? Uh, as your role in a school board member?
Honestly, I'm really excited about, um, about that. Um, just getting on there, communicating, seeing others' views on different things, having an open mind.
Yeah. Yeah. See more than one point of view, not just your own point of view. Just not a self thing.
Yes, yes. And come up with a, you know, with a better way to help and advocate, support everybody.
Yes. I agree. I'm trying to get this thing. Okay, so my thing though went down, hold on. So do you, uh, do, do you have, have you ever ran for office before? This your first time running for office, right?
This is actually my first time ever, uh, running for school board.
For board, okay. So how, how long have you been at the school, uh, faith?
I have actually been at All Face for 11 years, um, but I have been the director for five years.
Five years, okay. And that will give you some, uh, some clarity on how to, um, be on the school board cause you, you're running something now, so you have idea of what's working and what's not working. And you can bring all that knowledge with you as on the school board, yeah.
And honestly, um, we have, we have a school board as well, um, for All Face.
Okay.
So, you know, I have to go to them with different things and listen to, you know, what the different individuals have to say about whatever issue that we have on hand. So I am aware of how our school board runs at All Face, but, you know, I want, I do, and I'm sure it could be similar, if not the same.
Experience will give you.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
And it's not just a one-person thing, it's everybody.
Yeah. 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 What initiatives would you support to address students' mental health and well-building? Cause we have bullying, we have mental health, and then we have councils on the school. But sometimes just the councils alone is not enough cause I done heard parents saying that these kids go talk to the councils and they still might feel some type of way. So how do you feel about that?
Well, I just feel as though that we can't downplay mental health. Uh, we have to bring awareness about it. And we, not just awareness, when, for the month of, of mental health awareness. Like you have to bring this out all the time. But, and sometime too, we need to be very careful with the word bullying, how we're, how we're using it and different words because is it really bullying? Or is it, I mean, and it can, very well can be. But sometimes I think we really need to look up the definition of bullying before we just say it so loosely and go from there and talk to the students more about it, you know, so they can get a better understanding of what it is. Cause I mean, sometimes we say it's bullying and it's really children just being children.
Yeah.
And because we put our twist on it, it, it escalates.
Yeah.
So, I mean, no, I'm not saying downplay it by no means, but we just need to look at it and don't use it so loosely.
Yeah, yeah. So how do you, uh, how do you plan on addressing teachers' retention, recruitment challenges in the district?
Um,
how would you address it?
I mean, I would like to know the different things that the board has already, you know, how they have went about it. And, I mean, and just go from there.
Go from there. And, uh, what do you feel about, what are your views on the compensation professional development? You know, you were saying like the, uh, the star test and all that. I know they have to take, do they have to take classes to, to, to better themselves on knowledge, on how to, uh, to administrate their tests or?
You talking about the teachers?
The teachers, yeah.
Yeah, um, well, yeah, I think they need to, well, of course, they are, I'm sure they already get the training on, on how to, um, how to do the testing. I mean, but, I mean, really in, in the different areas that they, they, they know that they're, they're weak, they have weaknesses.
Yeah. And then you think they need more training or you think, yeah?
I mean, um, continuing education is always great.
Yeah.
To be a better you, if nothing else.
Okay. And how do you plan on to promote equity inclusion? I know we don't have DEI, but kids still need to be, feel safe in the environment they in as well. So if, how do you feel about that? And that's all kids, not just certain, a certain kid, just all kids?
Like how to include?
Yeah, inclusion. And then it's like, we have a new student coming into school. What do you feel about how they include them and to get them involved in the school? Uh, knowledge about what's going on, uh, you know, so they won't feel so alone.
Right. I mean, you just introduce them to different kids and, and let them, well, I, I mean, honestly, they just really have to get in and get a feel for it. Um, but just as, like us, environment, whenever they're coming in, let them feel welcome. We have student council, let student council know that, hey, we have a, a new student, you know? Let them go and introduce themselves to the, to the students. And maybe the different student council members could, you know, show them around. And they may not be their friend, but then again, it may be. But the student council, cause tho, those are the leaders of the school. So they can, you know, show them around and maybe, and help them maybe get new friends or just be their friend.
Yeah.
And if they see, if they see the student, you know, secluded themselves, then maybe they, the, the, the principals or the teachers, whoever are in, in lunch or whatever, they can say, hey, you know, talk to different students and have them to go over and eat with the student or have them to come over and eat with them.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So what measures would you advocate to close achievement gaps among different student groups?
Um, say, repeat, say that one more time for me.
I said, what measures would you advocate to close achievement gaps among different student groups?
I mean, well, I guess we have to see what, what it is that we're, so achievement gaps as of?
They're not, uh, they're not reaching their goal like their grade level or they not, uh, uh, certain milestones that they should have met, you know, at that grade level.
Right. Well, I, so, I mean, I know that, that we already do the, the testing to see where the students are at. I mean, speaking with the parents, seeing what, what other tools in the, in our district that we have that can help the student. Cause you know, sometimes the, the different resources that we have, the parents don't know that we have.
Yeah.
So communicating that with the parents and if it's extra tutoring time or, you know, whatever it is that the district may have, speak with the parent and see if the parent can get the student there. To get the extra help that the student may need.
Okay, with the current assessments of the current state, uh, school, uh, district facilities, what are your plans for improvement?
Well, I would hope that, uh, well, I think that the, I'm not gonna say I think nothing. Looking at the, looking at what needs to be done and sitting with the board, talking, seeing if they already have a plan in action and, and go from there. And if it, if they don't, then communicating with them, you know, the things that I see. And if it's in budget, to go forward.
Okay. Okay, let's see. What do you see about this ISD in the next five to 10 years? And what steps would you take to achieve that vision?
In the next, well, I see us as a, I see us, um, having better test scores. And, um,
No vouchers?
No, for sure. Definitely no vouchers. We are a, a, a wonderful public school.
Yeah.
Still moving forward with our educators.
Yeah.
Um, stronger education with, because of the money that will be coming in that is due to the, to the school district.
Yeah, yeah.
And how do I plan on doing that is, one, by calling the representatives and letting them know that, no, I do not agree with, with the vouchers. As well as other two bonds that I don't agree with as well.
Yeah. Okay. So how do you plan on preparing the students for challenges of the future, including college and career readiness? And we know we have col, we have career, uh, college day, uh, college prep, like they go to Lamar and they earned a, a degree before they even graduate. So how do you feel like the, uh, is there any challenges in, in the future that you see that could be, you know, maybe cartel right now? Where you can actually make it better for this kids that grad, that actually have to take those college courses and graduating? Or you think it's okay right now where it is?
I mean, as of right now, um, I really don't see any challenges with it. I have been asking questions about it though. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Honestly, as of right now, I have not, I don't know any challenges with that. But I have been, um, asking questions about it to get, you know, more awareness on it and a better understanding for myself with it.
Okay.
I have.
Yeah, okay. So like, uh, I hope that, I hope they do, uh, like maybe add some more like, it's a cosmetology. Do they have that here?
They don't have cos, now that is one thing that, um, some students have been discussing. They have talked about, uh, because other schools have cosmetology that they can.
In the sixth grade even.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so they is interested. I sent, heard some kids say they were interested in that, the cosmetology part of it. I know, just, just maybe add in more programs or something that would, uh, you know, something that they can achieve. There may be like, they're like, everybody might not, college not gonna be for them, but that's trade.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And honestly, there has been some students in, in our district that has been talking about it. They have, because I, maybe they have heard about the other schools. And so, yeah, now that is one thing that I would like to see.
Okay. So do you have any closing remarks? And then I'll close us out, that you would like to tell the voters about you or anything that you wanna tell them about your platform?
Um,
I know, what's your slogan?
Oh, my slogan is bringing back accountability with care.
Yeah.
And it, and it's because you have to really have a, a passion for this and a care for it. Because, um, or you just gonna really be in it for you, for yourself. That's how I feel. And I could be wrong, but it's just a passion and a love for children is why I want to, uh, you know, advocate. Because everybody doesn't have a voice. And if I can be that voice, if I can, you know, help that, that parent become their own voice.
Yes.
That teacher become her own voice.
Yeah.
You know, then, then, I mean, we're accomplishing some things.
Yeah, accomplishing.
And I was sitting thinking and I said, they, um, whenever we was looking at how, what makes me, what was number? I don't know what it was. What makes me differ, stand out from the other?
Yeah, the other candidates, yeah.
What makes me stand out from the other candidate? I'm a director of a preschool. And it's not only this community that I impact. But I impact Lumberton, Eberdale, Biona, Kirbyville, Warren, Coombs. Um, just different areas around here. And I feel as And I feel as though that speak volumes for Silsby itself. And they make, and we are the, you know, start with the foundation of the students. And whenever they come from all face, from Silsby, they wanna know what else is Silsby bringing in the district, if this is what we get. And that's not just me as a director, but that is our teachers. At our school as well, coming from the school, from Silsby School District. You know, and then too, whenever we, sometimes you have to send students who ha- may have a disability to the, to the public school, you know, and you have to talk to the different counselors. So it's not that they just, you know, see me, but they're talking to me as well.
Okay, yeah.
Look, I've, I've, uh, been on Silsby Junior Football League, uh, Board. I've been on Silsby Little Dribblers Board. Vice President of, um, the Cheer Booster Club, as well as, um, um, presently on the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Okay, so, so how do you plan on the, uh, balancing demands of school board position with other personal and professional responsibilities?
Well, honestly, we, I mean, it's already been done. Because, uh, you know, I'm already in the community. I'm already, um, you know, talking with different parents about different issues that's going on, so the balance is honestly already there. And being able to be at the board meetings, that's not a problem as, at, at all. Yeah, and it won't, it won't interfere with my board meetings and no other board, board meetings that I may have to attend. So, I mean, um, I'm available. Thing that made me go ahead and, and want to run as well because I'm saying, well, I'm already in the community, talking to the parents, you know, doing these different things. Only thing I'm not doing is talking to the school board about what parents are addressing with me.
Yeah, okay. So, before we go, is there anything else that you would like to tell the voters about your platform?
That I'm here, if you need, if you would like to reach out, I'm available. Go vote, I don't, vote, vote, vote. It is important to get out and vote. I'm, I'm placing, I'm number two on your ballot. And if you vote for me, I promise you, you will not be disappointed.
And when is the voting day?
Uh, voting day is, hmm, I don't know, I want to say May six. May, is it May?
May, I think it is May. April, April, April twelfth, when is early voting start, you know?
I don't even have my calendar up.
Okay, that's alright.
Sorry.
Just know that you need to go out and vote. Early vote starts in April, I think it starts April the twelfth or April the sixteen, I can't remember what day.
I don't know, why, seventeenth. I want to say seventeenth.
Uh, seventeenth, okay, and, uh, then, um, May is election day, just make sure you get out and vote. Uh, cuz it matters.
It matters big time.
Yeah, don't let people tell you that your vote don't matter, cuz it does.
It does.
So I wanna thank y'all all for coming on to Black to Black Talk Show. I wanna thank my guests for coming on, uh, and, uh, sharing her platform with the voters. And we are, I hope to see her again on the show again closer to election. So I just wanna thank you for coming on, and you have a good night.
Yes, we have you too, thank y'all so much, y'all have a good night, bye.